Everybody will call the November 11th meeting of the Common Council to order, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alder Person Grisham?
Here.
Grove?
Here.
Haas?
Here.
Halverson?
Here.
Keen?
Here.
Novak?
Here.
Noling?
Here.
Roet?
Aye.
Here.
Excuse me.
He's practicing.
Turner?
Here.
Weigel?
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum, please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alder Person Grisham.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, that will bring us to Part D on our agendas, we have two public hearings this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read out Public Hearing Number One.
Conditional use permit to allow massage therapy at the Beauty Collective, MKE, an existing use at 11212 West Greenfield Avenue.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you Mayor, this first public hearing is an existing business called The Beauty Collective at 112th and Greenfield Avenue, the location on the northwest corner of 112th and Greenfield, it is a multi-tenant building, the Beauty Collective occupies a portion of the space within that building, and their current operations include salon esthetician activities, including makeups, facials, covered under that existing permit, they are looking to add two massage therapy suites within this building, the property is Zone C3, massage therapy, as you know, does require a conditional use permit, the hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then there will be two salon business owners that will lease space within the building, they are, both of the operators are licensed operators, they've obtained their licenses, they will maintain an appointment log of records from customers, all customers will enter and exit through, you know, front doors, and then there will be 24/7 video surveillance within the common public areas or lobby areas and access points to the building, the daytime hours of operation will be, again, 8 to 8:00 p.m., and then just some information from the actual licensees that will be doing the massage therapy and how they're going to be operating with respect to the security of their business areas with respect to the conditional use. So there are no alterations proposed to the building, the interior or exterior, they're looking at, within the building, there's currently four rooms leased to salon tenants, two of those rooms will be converted to massage tenants, and that'll be Suite 3 and 4, as outlined here in the lower corner, Greenfield Avenue here is on the bottom, and then exterior features, there are currently 12 parking spaces, one of them being an accessible stall, and then there is an enclosed dumpster enclosure behind the building, and then existing landscaping will remain on the site. So Plan Commission has taken a look at this last month, and they've recommended approval, it does require a Common Council public hearing for purpose here tonight, and then some of the conditions typical to massage therapy that Council and Plan Commission have imposed in the past are that businesses shall operate with respect to licensing requirements by the state, that they'll maintain records, customer logs, installing cameras within the lobby areas, and then operating with, under daytime hours, so those, those conditions we would recommend be included within this conditional use permit, thank you.
Thank you Mr. Share, are there any questions or comments from the members of the Common Council on Public Hearing Number One? See none, so are there any questions or comments on Public Hearing Number One from the members of the audience? All right, I see none, so we will close our first public hearing, and we will move on to Item Two, and I will ask the clerk to read that item out.
Conditional use permit for AMP Automotive LLC, a proposed light motor vehicle sales use at 10150 West National Avenue.
Thank you, turn it back over to staff.
Thanks Mayor, the second hearing is perspective of a wholesale car dealer, AMP Automotive, they're looking to occupy a very small office space within the larger office building at 102nd and National Avenue. And then the property is Zone C4, commercial, and car dealerships, whether it's wholesale or retail in nature, does require a conditional use permit, the proposed wholesale auto dealership is not going to be using this parking lot or this property for display of vehicles or selling, sale of vehicles, it's strictly going to be an office use, however, with licensing through the state, we want to be clear to the, to the businesses, or the business in this case, in running a car dealership, a wholesale car dealership, that it's strictly office use, they are proposing to run it in that manner with the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. from, you know, throughout the week, and again, they're not going to be selling vehicles from this location, they're going to be purchasing vehicles at auction or from other entities out in the public, and then working with other dealerships, none of those cars that they purchase will come back to this site, they will be either staged somewhere else or sold directly to those other markets, there are no exterior or interior changes proposed to the building, the office buildings in this case, and then there are going to be two parking stalls assigned, you know, within this larger parking lot for, for the business owners of this, of AMP Automotive, and this is just a floor plan showing the second floor space that they're going to occupy. So Plan Commission has recommended approval, it has been published, there have been no objections to date, and, thank you.
Thank you very much, are there any questions or comments on Public Hearing Number Two from the Common Council?
Mayor Devine?
Alder Woman Keen.
So to confirm, the building that's being leased also has other tenants in there, they're just taking one of the spaces within the current existing building.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Council?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigel?
Steve, so if I go by there and I see a car hauler unloading carts, I should get a picture and send it to you?
Yeah, you can call me or, or Code Enforcement Department, we'd be happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Council on Public Hearing Number Two? If not, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience on Public Hearing Number Two? All right, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing, and we will now move on to Section E of our agendas, which is public participation, this is where the Common Council can receive information from residents on interest, of matters of interest to them, we ask each speaker to sign in at the podium and announce their name and address, and we ask that they also limit their comments to one statement of no longer than five minutes, the Council cannot take action on topics raised by the speakers and will not go into discussion on the topics. Does anybody wish to address the Council under public participation this evening? You're free to use the Police Department as your address if you so choose.
Good evening everyone, my name is Zachary Scott, I'm the President of the West Dallas Police, Professional Police Association, the address is 11301 West Lincoln Avenue, I've been a police officer for the city of West Dallas for the last 21 and a half years, yesterday our members voted overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly in favor of ratifying the contract proposal for the years of 2026 through 2029, which is up for a vote by the Common Council tonight. I am here to sincerely thank the city for recognizing our police officers, I believe the outcome of this contract reflects the sacrifices that our police officers make, as well as the important, oftentimes dangerous work that we perform on a daily basis, when we started the negotiations, it was important to our union board to resolve them in a timely manner, the contract negotiations were fair, straightforward, and cordial, I want to specifically thank City Attorney Cale Decker, Mayor Dan Devine, City Administrator Erin Hearn, she's back there somewhere, and Chief Patrick Mitchell for their roles in getting this contract finalized, I look forward to continuing to work with the city administration and maintaining a good relationship in the years ahead, thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Hello, Adam Novak, 9730 West Montana Avenue, I stand before you today with deep gratitude and appreciation for the incredible support we at Novak Manor have received from the West Dallas City Council, the residents of West Dallas, and the surrounding community, your unwavering support has been the backbone of Novak Manor 2025, making our success possible, thanks to, thanks to your generosity and trust, we saw over 9,000 people in 44 hours, and we have been able to contribute to several vital causes within our community, we donated $7,000 to bikers advocating child safety, helping to ensure that they can continue in their mission, additionally, we contributed $3,000 to the West Dallas Central Bulldogs football program, and donated a total of $3,200 to the Waukesha South Drama Department, both groups brought student volunteers, which was great having these kids, kids participate in our community, we have also been fortunate enough to again, help a local family who has fell on tough times, lastly, but one of the most cherished in our hearts is a donation that went to the West Dallas Police Department K-9 Unit, which Alder Woman Novak and I were able to present to Corporal Saig and K-9 Casey today, since we are huge supporters of law enforcement as well as being dog lovers, being able to support the K-9 Unit has been a blessing, and it's all because of your support, without the collective effort of everyone here, BACS, our wonderful supportive sponsors, and our amazing volunteers, none of this would have been possible, your faith in our purpose has fueled our drive in continuing to give back and to make a difference, looking ahead to 2026, I'm excited to share that big changes are on the horizon, we are planning new initiatives, expanding outreach, and community involvement, I promise that we will be back bigger and stronger than ever, thank you once again for your trust and support, and your belief in Novak Manor, together we are building a brighter future in West Dallas, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, does anybody else wish to address the Council under public That was definitely the most positive public participation I have ever encountered, as long as I've been here, so thank you for that, I'm going to stop it right now before it goes south. We move on to Item F, our standing committees will be meeting during recess, those room numbers are on the top of your agendas on Page Two, so if you are here for a specific piece of business with the city, whether it be a license or something like that, and you are not sure what room to go to when we break for recess, please stop one of us and ask, and we will make sure to get you in the right room. Moving on to Item G, the Mayor's Report, I just want to quickly acknowledge that it is Veterans Day, and I want to take a minute to acknowledge all the veterans in our community that work for our city, that are in the area, and let them know that they are appreciated today, and they are heard, and they are seen, and I also want to thank our local Tanner Paul Post for assisting our staff with putting on a Veterans Day ceremony this morning at the police substation, with County Executive Crowley and several members of the Post speaking and, and being a part of that special ceremony. That does conclude the Mayor's Report, are there any reports from the Alder Persons?
Mayor Devine.
Alder Woman Noling?
I just want to give a shout out to City Center Neighborhood Association for a very successful event on Sunday, they had their first annual chili cook-off, and it was a fabulous time by all.
Thank you, any other reports from the Alder Persons?
Mayor Devine?
You go.
Sorry. Alderman Halverson?
Just wanted to shout out to the second grade class at Horace Mann, I was invited to talk about being an elected official today, because obviously, I'm only been doing this for two years, and I know everything about it, but it was a really good time, the kids were engaged, and I just want to thank them for inviting me.
Thank you Alderman, Alder Woman Grisham?
Mayor Devine, thank you, as a business owner in City Center, I attended this wonderful Neighborhood Association meeting for the first time, and I just want to give props to Alder Woman Noling that she took away the prize for the chili contest, number one. That's it, thank you.
Any other reports from the Alder Persons?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
I move for approval of the minutes of the November 4th, 2025 Common Council Meeting.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, if there are no changes or corrections, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chair?
Are approved, Attorney Decker?
I was just alerted by staff that there is an individual in the audience who wished to participate in public comments, but did not realize that that time had been closed.
Oh.
So I don't know if the Council is interested, I don't know if we've used the full 30 minutes yet.
Not even close.
Proceedurally, if you'd like to, you could reopen public comment as long as it's a unanimous consent to the Council.
Only if it's positive.
No promises.
Any objections? All right, it's ordered.
Good evening everybody, thank you for having me, I would be brief, I appreciate your time, my name is Karim Girmi, I'm a public affairs specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration, and I'm sure you've heard of us, we're here alongside FEMA and other partners, providing support following the recent disaster that happened in August, and we're still, the, the physical damage deadline is still on the 12th of this month for FEMA, but for the SBA, we have an extension for another 60 days, and for, for people who are aware, they can always get some help for, from the SBA, and since Milwaukee and Washington and Waukesha County, they are all primary counties, they, not just small businesses actually qualify for, small businesses actually qualify for support, but also homeowners, renters, and nonprofits, because when, when most people hear the name SBA, they think we only help Small Business Administration, but actually 80% of our support goes to homeowners, so I think that a lot of, there is a lot of work to do for, to, to help people know about the support they can get, the difference between us and FEMA is that FEMA, they provide grants, but we provide loans, very low interest loans, in terms up to 30 years, and again, just to be, to be brief, on the business side, like the types of loans we provide for businesses, there are physical and not, and economic, and economic injury disaster loans, so both of them have a limit up to $2 million, and homeowners have, can get help up to $500,000, and renters can get up to $100,000 for personal property, so what we take into consideration, we always ask people to apply no matter what's their credit score, because we take it on a case-by-case basis, and what we take into account is the credit history, not the credit, not the, not the credit score, credit history, ability to repay, as well as the full application, and we invite everybody to apply, either in person or in some, our recovery centers, or on lending.sba.gov, thank you so much, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me a question.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Allah, it's a pleasure, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're back now, Item J, we have no standing committee reports, so we will go to Item K, Alderman Haas.
Mayor Devine, thank you, in regard to Item K, our, our consent agenda, do any Alder Persons wish for separate action on any consent agenda items? Then seeing none, I move for approval of Item K, our consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion of questions? If not, I will ask the clerk to take a roll.
Alder Person Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Keen?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Noling?
Aye.
Roet?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Tenant favor zero, opposed.
Motion carries.
And Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
Before we adjourn for our council recess, I think Alder Woman Grisham is willing to bring a motion.
Thank you Alderman Haas, or President Haas, I move to discharge Item 21 on our agenda, and, from committee, and take up that item, that we can hear it right here on the floor, did I say that correctly? Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that item is before us.
Mr. Chair, normally you can have the clerk read out the item then at this time?
That's a good idea, Madam Clerk, please read out the item.
Resolution directing staff to draft and present all necessary documentation to implement the initial term sheet regarding a joint fire department.
Thank you, thank you everybody, so today I'm going to discuss the term sheet that was put together, this is a draft term sheet, during this meeting, there will be no approvals at this time, we are putting in front of you the resolution, however, we will bring it back on, at the December meeting, so I just wanted to preface this presentation with that information, so first of all, the purpose of this term sheet is to establish a joint fire department through intergovernmental agreement, we have been talking about this for a while, and now we've put the, the outline of what this will look like, and what we will have in the intergovernmental agreement. So first and foremost, the governance structure we're looking at, we're looking at having a two-tier oversight model of the Board of Directors, which would include the mayors, the council presidents, and city administrators from each community, we would also propose a, a Board of Fire Commissioners, which would be three residents per city, and they would be appointed by the mayor and ratified by council, so if anybody has any questions during this, please, please let me know. What we're proposing for the contract term and termination, we would propose that we go for an initial 10 years with an automatic six-year renewal, if anyone wishes to terminate at any time, if it's with cause, it would require a two-year notice after the initial term, which is the 10-year term, if it's with cause, it would be regi, regar. So then we also have the cost sharing and budgeting, so after the McMahon report that came out, showing how similar we were to Wauwatosa, we have decided that a 50/50 split would be the best way to go, the budget rules that we're proposing is that for the first five years, that it be capped at 2.84, so that we can follow in line with all the requirements for the innovation grant, after that, automatic approval of 4% or CPI plus 2%, whichever is lower, but that's what we're proposing would happen in this contract. There's also some performance standards that were discussed the last time, both chiefs got together and put these goals, or these together, but there are CFIA, ISO, and NFPA performance standards that they already have to collect, so those would be some of the ones that they would put through these performance metrics, they also have, having a call, call processing and total response time, as well as fire spread inspections, death and injuries would be tracked as well, and then at, by the end of 10 years, they're hoping to have, achieve accreditation, which right now, West Dallas does have accreditation, but with putting the group together, they would need to go out for accreditation again, so. Regarding property, so if, if this was not to work out, existing property would revert to the original owners, and then the new assets that were purchased would be split 50/50, so it would be sold in split, split 50/50, including vehicles and equipment. There's also some shared services that we've discussed, so we're proposing that Wauwatosa would take HR and finance, and then West Dallas would have attorneys and IT services, and then communications, fleet, and insurance would go through the joint department. Right now, we have McMahon is working with a subcommittee, which includes fire, police, dispatch, admins, and technical experts, to put together an evaluation of both dispatch facilities, in order to come up with a recommendation, that could take about six months or so, so they just started the process recently, but they are putting that information together, and we're going to meet, be meeting about it within the next couple of months. Another thing that was considered during the discussion of this term sheet is labor and union coordinations, so right now, both fire chiefs are meeting monthly with the union board members, as well as the union boards meeting to, with each, of each city meeting together as well, so that has been going on this last month, there's also negotiations to consider, however, the, the new entity needs to be created before that happens, so all of this sign-off on intergovernmental agreements has, has to take place before we get to the point of negotiations, but as always, we're in this for, you know, for collaboration and transparency, so. So there are four phases that we put together, the first is what we're in right now, and that's the governance and planning phase, which could take up to six months, and that's just the, the leadership, the financial arrangement, and talking about the dispatch study, then after that, we're going to move on to the organizational structure, training, and branding, 12 to 24 months will be optimized stations and fleet, and special teams, and then after that, 24-plus months would be monitoring metrics, workforce engagement, and developing a 10-year strategic plan, so that's kind of the layout of, of what we're looking for within the next two years. Some key success factors that can be seen, we will utilize when putting this organization together, is maintaining a strong unified leadership, making sure our communication is transparent, having engagement from the unions and employees in each fire department, respecting each department's traditions when going forward and making decisions, community outreach and trust, as well as measurable cost and service improvements, so those are our keys looking forward. So the next steps, so what we're doing today is just discussing what's on the term sheet, at the next meeting, it will be in front of you for approval, if it's approved at that time, then we will put together an intergovernmental agreement, which will be reviewed and, and asked for approval on the January 20th, it will basically incorporate all of these terms, but it will also include articles of incorporation and a service contract, all of this has to be done before we submit the grant, and the grant is due by March 31st, so that is our, we're working backwards from there, so, does anybody have any questions?
Thanks for the presentation, Administrator Hearn?
Yes, you're welcome.
Mayor Devine.
Alder Woman Keen?
I had a couple of questions, when it came to dispatch, right now, police is doing dispatch for fire, so is that what's being taken into consideration of how that impact is, of what is determined on dispatch, how that could also impact police, is police part of this bigger test?
Yes, police is part of the discussion, it's an evaluation of how boats are set up, how they work, the involvement of the fire department, you know, what their calls are like, so they're, they're just taking apart and interviewing both, both groups, so they were actually on-site today to interview both dispatch centers, and to ask a bunch of questions about how, you know, how they work.
And there was a-
What their structure is made up of.
And there was a subcommittee, right?
Yes.
That's going to be part of this?
Yeah.
And who does that subcommittee consist of?
So it's just the, the fire chief, the attorney, I'm sorry, I had it on here, let me go back, myself, oop, what's that, yeah, so we've been-
Oh, gotcha, thank you.
Yep, we've been speaking with the police department, and, yeah, admin, dispatch, technical experts, yeah, so it's, it's just been the main team, we have an executive team, and that's the attorneys, the administrators, the, the fire chiefs, when discussing these things, so.
All right, and then my other question was, you had about the contract term, that they can terminate without cause during the renewal term for a two-year notice, who can decide this? The committee, the fire department themselves, who can, who would decide that they don't want to renew, who makes that decision?
So it would probably be the Board of Directors.
Okay.
So, yep.
And then my very last question is, I know that this is for discussion purposes only, but when we approve this resolution, does that then mean that after that point, this kind of gets turned over to the Board of Directors, the Board of Fire Commissions, and then the inner workings of the details of like what schedule they're going to take, how benefits are going to go, how time off is going to go, does that then fall into those committees and not under Common Council jurisdiction, am I understanding that properly?
Yes, yes, that's correct, but this is after you've signed the interg, the intergovernmental agreement, so that would be on the January 20th. So that would be on the January twentieth date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alderman Gersham.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Erin, for the presentation. I have a question regarding the governance. Because at this point, we have eighteen public officials between Wauwatosa and West Dallas. And this governance is, from my understanding, as you pointed out, it's going to be both mayors, both city administrators, both council presidents, three residents from each city. How does that-
Will be on the fire commission.
Pardon me?
The three residents per city will be on the fire commission.
Exactly, and that's what I mean. So currently, we have a police and fire commission that will be going to a fire commission for our city, and that's, as you said, the structure of governance. However, at this time, we don't have any alderpersons that are part of the police and fire commission. And I want to know how that works as far as determinations, because obviously, the council will still have the purse to pay for things, if I'm correct. But then the Board of Directors has the decision-making. How does that work with having an elected official on that board when it comes to voting? And otherwise, the same as if there was an event of a tie, and Mayor Devine would have to break that? How does that work without there being a vice? Obviously, our goal is to make these depart, the department the best it can be, no doubt. But I just want to make sure there would never be a runaway situation.
Attorney Decker.
Sure. So the proposed idea is to create a Chapter 181 non-stock corporation, and the mayors, council presidents, and city administrators from each community, total of six people, would form the Board of Directors of that corporation. If you think about it, it's sort of the substitute of what the council is to the city. So that Board of Directors makes all the decisions on finances and everything like that, so that's, is running the corporation. The fire commission would only handle the hiring, discipline, training, policies of the actual firefighters and administrative staff. They wouldn't handle any money. They wouldn't handle any decisions for the corporation. In fact, they'd be appointed directly by the two communities. They would not be appointed by the Board of Directors. There's a case out of the nineteen eighties that says that cities actually cannot appoint alderpersons or elected officials to the fire commission, police to fire commission. So that's the reason why they are separated. The governing body then is very much controlled by the cities and their governing bodies. But then the fire commission remains independent as it's intended in the statutes. So anything I've missed, I'm happy to jump on that, but I think I've covered most of it.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
All right. Erin, or whoever wants to answer this. So budgeting, we're committed to budget increases, I think in the, in the slide it showed a, for five years, the first five years of the ten years.
Oh, no. Going back, I'm sorry.
Yeah. My question is, then, after that, yeah, their first five years capped at 2.84% annual increase. All right. And then after that period, how does it work? Is it the, the joint fire department makes a request, this is its total budget, and then it's split fifty-fifty between Wauwatosa and West Dallas, and this is the number? Or what if, what if we as a council say, no, no, joint fire department, we can't afford that as a community, we're looking at a different number? How does that work?
So what this is basically saying is that they could automatically increase it up to 4% or CPI plus two, whichever is lower. Regardless, they wouldn't have to bring it to common council. So that's the, that would, that would be just an automatic approval. If they wanted more than that, then they would have to bring and request it to common council, or to the, to their board, I'm sorry.
To their board.
So.
So if they would want more than that, a greater increase, then what's up?
Alderman Haas, I think your microphone turned off.
Mine did too.
Okay.
Thank you. So if they, if, yeah, the, so if they're asking for, for an increase greater than the 4% or CPI plus 2%, whichever is lower, during the first ten years.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and it doesn't say first ten years, it just says going forward.
Going forward.
Yeah.
Okay. That's even better. All right. And then, how about a name? Has there been some discussion? And what about Wawa Stalis?
So a name has not been chosen yet. Actually, we will probably have to choose a name, you know, just to create the, the entity at first, but yes, no, no name has been chosen. However, I do know that the fire departments have already been discussing it.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Haas. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grob.
I guess just a point of clarification, obviously, if moving forward, if there be the joint police commission, would we then have to create a separate police commission for each city then, since it's, they're currently a joint?
I will let Kayle take that.
Sure. So currently, the police and fire commission for the city of West Dallas would continue to exist as a police commission. And so all the members who are appointed to it would continue to serve in that capacity during their terms. They would just focus only on the police department moving forward if a joint commission is accredited.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keen.
I had a follow-up question on the budget. So within our budget, we're going to assume this much plus 4%. That's how we know that we're going to be able to continue to afford as cities the payroll, because we know that the city is still budgeting for the payroll of it. Again, this grant isn't meant to subsidize, to fully fund the police department or, or fire departments, it's meant to help with the equipment. Revitalization of stations. So then if it was over, so then within the mayor's budget, that would be part of that amount each year that would be budgeted for? And then if it was over, it would have to come to common council?
Correct.
To make sure that it's afforded? So like, we know what that would be then, each year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Then if there's no other questions, would somebody want to make a motion to approve?
There's no approval needed.
So.
This is just- Yep. This is just a discussion only.
Thought the resolution was recommended to be-
Recommended.
Mr. Chair, you'll see on the agenda that the recommendation is to adopt this resolution. However, just to time up things, Wauwatosa won't be taking action on this tonight either. Wanted to make sure that councils have an opportunity to consider the new information they just received. And so that's why I think the advantage is to actually move to postpone this item until December ninth. That way, it gives a month for the council to consider things and make sure that the term sheet that's been delivered to everyone is something that you want to see in the final documentation. Because if we get any comments on December ninth that you want something changed, you'd have an opportunity to make those changes before January twentieth.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move that we postpone this item till December ninth.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the item is postponed.
Mayor Devine. May I make a suggestion that we have this in the same format as we have now for December ninth, if that's okay? We do that in advance, or do we need to?
We'll do it when we do the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
And Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move that the council stand in recess until the conclusion of our committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? We are in recess.
To order and I will ask our clerk to call the roll. When she's ready.
Alderperson Grisham?
Here.
Grove?
Here.
Haas?
Here.
Halverson?
Here.
Keen?
Here.
Novak?
Here.
Nolene?
Here.
Roach?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Weigel?
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. We will begin with the Administration Committee. I will ask the clerk to read out that report.
The Administration Committee recommends placing on file of item seventeen, passing of item eighteen, adoption of items nineteen and twenty.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine, I move in accordance with the Committee's report.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Keen?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Nolene?
Aye.
Roach?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. We have nothing from Public Works Committee this evening, so we will go right to the Economic Development Committee.
I'm going to read out item twenty-two separately. The Economic Development Committee recommends adoption of item twenty-two.
Mayor Devine, I move in accordance of the Committee report.
I'm sorry, which one was read out separately? Twenty-two. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Alderman Keen. Is there any discussion on item twenty-two? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Keen?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Nolene?
Aye.
Roach?
No.
Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries.
The Economic Development Committee recommends granting of item twenty-three, approval of item twenty-four, and also item twenty-five.
Mayor Devine, I move in accordance of the Committee report.
Thank you. Any discussion on items twenty-three through twenty-five? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Then we'll go to the Public Safety Committee. I'll ask the clerk to read that out.
The Public Safety Committee recommends granting of items twenty-six and twenty-seven, denial of items twenty-eight and twenty-nine based on the police record and the failure to appear, adoption of items thirty and thirty-one.
Mayor Devine, I move for approval of the Public Safety Committee report.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Keen?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Nolene?
Aye.
Roach?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
I move that the council stand adjourned until our next scheduled meeting, Tuesday, December ninth.